Good afternoon. I am calling to order this special work session. Today is Tuesday, January 24th. I would like to provide notice that the City Council has the ability to recess into executive session for legal advice if needed. City Clerk, can we please have roll call?
Mayor Daggett, here. Vice Mayor Aslan.
President.
Councilmember Harris. Councilmember House.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pleasure, Madam Mayor. Please stand as you are able.
Councilmember House, would you give us our mission statement?
It's my honor, Mayor. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Councilmember Sweet, would you lead us in the land acknowledgement?
It would be my honor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. And Ms. Tohe, would you come up here and introduce our speaker for item number four?
I don't see, I see red now. Greetings, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this evening. My clans's. That's who I am as an indigenous Dene woman. I liked, and my name is Rose Tohe. I'm the Coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives here at City of Flagstaff. I'd like to introduce Mrs. Diane Loma-Haftewa Albert. She is Snow Clan. How appropriate, huh? And she comes to us from, she works with Flagstaff Unified School District as the Native American Education Support Program Coordinator. And she will provide us a traditional Hopi prayer this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Becky Daggett, and Councilmembers. And for those of you here tonight, I appreciate the opportunity to do the prayer for you all. Good evening or good afternoon. It's probably still early enough. My name is Diane Loma-Haftewa Albert. I am Snow Clan from Hopi. I work here in Flagstaff. As I pray, I please take this time to ask you to use this moment to pause, pray, meditate, or contemplate how your own values will support the mission of the City of Flagstaff in protecting and enhancing the quality of life for all within the role you serve here as leaders and as community members of Flagstaff. And with all my Snow ancestors and I'm sure everybody here today, I celebrate in your commencement in this new leadership role that you will be carrying through. So it's up to you if you'd like to pray or sit. That's perfectly fine, and I'll go ahead and begin. Thank you again for inviting me tonight. I am deeply honored to be here with you and pray for your strength in your leadership through a long enriched life.
Thank you, Mrs. Loma-Haftewa Albert. We appreciate you being here. All right, next up is public participation. And I see that we have two cards. I don't think we have anything online. Our first public participant is Anthony Garcia. Welcome, Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor Aslan, new members of the Council and City Council. My name is Anthony Garcia, 2212 North Center Street. And well, we've all been kind of digging ourselves out of this winter, this season, and it's been a lot of fun. Been helping out our neighbors, and I've been helping out my neighbors and friends and relatives all over the city dig out. And while we're out there shoveling, we're talking about, you know, sports and this, that, and the other, we're also talking about city issues. And the one that keeps coming up, I'm sure you guys have heard as well, is the parking ordinance. I have missed quite a few City Council meetings as of late, so if I'm being duplicative, I'm sorry, but that, what I'm asking for today is that we put that on a future agenda, item topic, or affair, however you want to say it. So that way, at least the public can understand what the parking ordinance is and how it works. I also have friends who work for the city, and they said that they had a whole lot of problems plowing out streets because of the way cars were parked. So you know me, I went and I took to the streets, I drove around, I knocked on some doors, I talked to some people, and I realized that this is more of an issue of, as everything is in Flagstaff, potentially housing. So, you know, during that fair discussion, we can, we can list all the reasons why our parking is situated the way it is. And the public could at least know why the city isn't enforcing it, or if the city isn't enforcing it, they could understand where they're enforcing it, because the people I talked to were, that was their biggest concern, was that it's not being enforced. And I'm not here to advocate for enforcement, I'm just here to advocate for a discussion to take place. Realizing that that discussion probably won't take place until the spring or summertime, when nobody cares about this now anymore, but, you know, as you all behind the dais realize, you know, we're here to make substantive change for the future. And we don't want this issue to come again, because I'm going way back here, might be dating myself, but wherein Councilmember Orvitz was on the City Council. And I remember him saying, if we're going to have a parking ordinance and we're not going to enforce it, then why do we have a parking ordinance? And we're still, that's like nine years later, we're still having that discussion in the community. Thank you, guys, and have a good meeting.
Thank you, Anthony. Next up, we have Mr. Shawn Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody, Shawn Johnson, Chief of Staff to the Mayor and Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Just wanted to take a quick second to introduce Ms. Doris Menza. She's going to be your new Executive Assistant. She comes to us with a wealth of knowledge and experience. She is also a recent graduate from NAU, so just to throw that out there for everybody. Go Jax. And then we will also be setting up meetings with you all to introduce her, get your scheduling preferences, whatever you need. And then I also wanted to introduce her to the public, as well as the rest of our staff. So, welcome. We're so excited to have you. And if you wanted to say a few words.
Just a few words. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for the warm reception, and I'm super excited to be here. I remember standing here somewhere last year and just expressing my appreciation for having me around to just sit in your meeting, and today I'm here as an employee, and I can only imagine how excited I am. Just thank you so much, and thank you to everyone who has been a help to me since I got here this morning. I feel at home already, and I'm so excited to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Welcome, Doris. Thank you, Shawn. All right, next up, we have item number seven, the Carbon Neutrality Plan Quarterly Update.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Nicole Antonopoulos, Sustainability Director. We're excited to be here with you today for our biannual update on the Carbon Neutrality Plan. And just a quick reminder for the Council that we are now on a biannual update schedule for the Carbon Neutrality Plan. We upgraded that, if you will, from quarterly updates to biannual, so we can really have a more robust conversation about the work that's being done. That said, we've been working really hard as a team and as in an organization on our climate commitments. And today's presentation just captures some key highlights from the work over the last six months. I want to take a moment, Mayor and Council, to share how proud I am of this small team and the work that they do. Our team is currently made up of Gracie Rec Emmer, our Youth Climate Advisory, excuse me, our Youth Climate Leadership Vista, Jenna Ortega, our Climate Engagement Coordinator, Jenny Niemann, our Climate Program Manager, and myself. We are thrilled to announce that the Resilience Analyst Position, which is the first new position since the adoption of the Carbon Neutrality Plan, has been accepted by Genevieve Parthry. You may recall, you heard from Genevieve last week. She is a City of Flagstaff staffer, and we're excited to have her come work on our team. She'll be joining us in early February. And Christian Hernandez will also be joining us in February as our Clean Jobs Workforce Development AmeriCorps Vista. And our Climate Analyst Position, formerly held by Ramon Alatorre, is still vacant, and we are in the recruitment process. We're really looking forward to having a full team, as we have a lot of work ahead of us, and you'll be hearing more about that. Now I'd like to hand the presentation to Jenny Niemann. She is joining us virtually this afternoon. Jenny?
Thank you so much, Nicole, and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Happy New Year. I'm really sorry I can't be there with you in person today. Our conversation this afternoon has three different elements. First, we're going to discuss just some of the underlying tenets of climate action, just to kind of center ourselves around what we do and how we try to do it. We have four main ways that we organize our climate action. Then, we will review specific actions that we're taking to implement the Carbon Neutrality Plan. Finally, Nicole, return with some big picture ideas as we renew our commitment to climate action this year. So before I talk about what we're doing, I'd like to pause here to reference how we work. There's a lot on this slide, I'm not going to go through it all. It is from the Carbon Neutrality Plan on page 18, which is the beginning of the Approach section. That is my favorite section of the Carbon Neutrality Plan, because we tried really hard to take a look at how we want to work. Climate action is a really difficult topic. If it was easy, we wouldn't have to talk about it all the time. And so this section lays out how we will move forward. I'm going to highlight just a few. The first is that carbon neutrality is community-driven inherently, really, that's why it's number one. Survey after survey, we hear that the community wants climate action. The Carbon Neutrality Plan exists because hundreds of community members asked for it specifically. And we try really hard to bring community input and energy into everything that we do. Another key tenet is that climate action is an investment, and it's not simply, you know, a feel-good investment. It's actually a financial investment. It is the most financially prudent thing to do. This has been proven by study after study after study. We have to get the right incentives in line, right, to move forward, but we know that climate action is the least expensive option compared to no action. We know that preparation is much less expensive than result, and we know it's in the best financial interest of the city and its taxpayers to invest in climate action. The third element is one that comes up again and again. As we work to take climate action, we're also working to meet many other community goals. We know there are a lot of things that you all work on as a council, and I want to assure you that we don't shy away from those perceived tensions between maybe climate goals and other priorities. We want to face them head-on. We want to have really open conversations about them, and always point to that common ground, because we know it's there. One recurring example that we always bring up here is housing. You know, we hear a lot, oh, sustainability and, you know, housing are in conflict, but we don't really see it as the case. We know that our friends in housing don't either. Affordable housing and sustainability can be achieved together. We see it across the country in big ways. We see it in Flagstaff. Maybe that's the new all-electric homes from Habitat for Humanity, or the, through policy changes that we know are there that can make housing cheaper to build and can lead to a more sustainable community. Our team works really hard to work hand-in-hand, really, with our colleagues in housing. Related to this is the fourth approach I just want to touch on briefly, and it's really just that our brand of climate action is one that is based in co-benefits. This means focusing on the many benefits that climate action means, so that might be quality of life, that might be improved health, a stronger community. Often, we talk a lot more about those other benefits, right? No one really likes to talk about greenhouse gas emissions all the time, right? Instead, we talk about that people who electrify their homes end up with a home that's more comfortable, that has better air quality, that's a lot healthier, or switching to electric parks equipment, which our Parks Team is piloting. You know, there's a lot less noise and vibration. It actually makes a better park, right, while using less fuel, while also making a healthier workplace for our employees. The co-benefits here are many, and they are diverse, and so we just wanted to take a moment to kind of center ourselves on these approaches. We have three core climate goals that we try to keep in mind. They are fundamental to the Carbon Neutrality Plan, as well as our first 2018 climate plan. There's fancy names for these, but it's actually quite simple. We're trying to reduce our impact, right? Really, really simple and core value. We're trying to prepare for change and build a stronger community, and we're trying to help our community members that are disproportionately impacted by climate change. The goal that might define the Carbon Neutrality Plan is mitigation. That is what carbon neutrality is, is essentially removing emissions. But the two other goals, adaptation and equity, are equally important. And so while we work, we try to ensure we have all three of these goals incorporated into every single action that we take. Finally, we work to achieve these three climate goals through eight different methods. This is new, and we wanted to give this sort of organizing framework to Council, because this really represents the what that we do. We talk a lot about, you know, the topics, maybe that's electric vehicles or solar, but this is really kind of, well, what are we doing about that, right? We're well, we're working on community change, so where we work directly with community members, or municipal processes, the more internal work about, you know, helping the city organization, the data behind it, supporting our partners. We are going to go through all eight of these sort of methods. Luckily, Gracie and Jenny are going to join me in this review, and the overarching message is this, there's lots underway. We're simultaneously working in all eight of these areas. Climate action has to be both really, really broad and really, really deep to achieve the scale that we need. Okay, and last one. Not only do we have these eight methods of taking action, we have to do all eight of those things in all of our 15 target areas. We've revised the Carbon Neutrality Plan in December, so we now have four priority areas, and that's really what we're organizing around, neighborhoods, energy consumption, and commitments. The target areas are below that. And, and the point here is really just that, you know, we need those methods in every single one of these. So we need policy change and infrastructure for electric mobility, as well as for community resilience, as well as for healthy forests, right? We need community capacity for clean electricity, as well as carbon dioxide removal. Partner support is clearly critical for housing and healthy forests and recreation, but also for decreasing dependence on cars. So we're going to go through these eight methods, and, and this is just to say, you'll see these four priority areas continually to pop up. All right, so for policy development, the first one I'll discuss, two important things. The asterisk is for new things and things that are forthcoming, ongoing. This is really a, you know, an update on the last six months of our work, but we do want to talk about what's ahead, and so that's the asterisk there. Secondly, we've really tried to arrange our work from the broadest down to the most narrow, the most individual. And so policy development is the most effective way to make change. It's a lot more effective to change policy around transit, for instance, than to try to convince people to ride the bus when clearly it doesn't work for them today. Same goes for energy, same goes for recycling, et cetera. We try to work from the broad and then get narrow as we have to. Policy isn't always possible, right? And so that's when we go to the next steps. Maybe that's infrastructure, maybe that's incentives, and doing the long-term work of education and engagement, for instance. So for policy development, we've got a lot of things moving forward on transportation, the recently adopted Active Transportation Master Plan, or ATMP. This is going to be critical to achieving our climate goals. We'll need to work hard to really use the ATMP and implement the ATMP through all of our policy and budget development processes. The big shift conversation this fall, Council gave strong direction for moving forward on concepts we've talked about for years, from speed limits to road standards. And so we will be back to Council with our friends in engineering in the next few months to talk to you about how we're moving forward. Code change, it's really necessary. Simply put, we cannot get to climate action and breach our goals using codes that were created before we even had climate goals, which is essentially what we're doing today. So we are working with our friends in planning and housing to move forward, the code analysis project that I know you've heard about recently, as well as to join a statewide coalition to work on improving our building codes. I love whenever we get to work with Amy Hagan in Building Safety and Dan Falk in Community Development, so we're really grateful that they are our partners here. We've got policy work to do on resilience and equity here. Right now, we're working internally to ensure our staff have the tools they need for a changing future, a volatile future, but also to make a more equitable one. And so I will, you'll hear more on that in the coming year. Next is community infrastructure. Infrastructure can also have broad effects. We need to create the conditions, right, for people to be able to take action in their community and to use infrastructure. One ongoing infrastructure partnership is the Take Charge EV Charging Station Program. This is through a partnership with APS that we're really grateful for. We've just wrapped up this project. We just completed the visitor center stations. They're pictured here, you can go downtown and see them as well. We have installed 19 charging stations through this partnership in the last three years. Really excited about that. This is on the ground, right, for community members to use. We want to shout out the city staff at City Hall, the Ocoplex, the airport, and the visitor center for the long processes sometimes to get these in the ground. And we're, now that we're done the construction stage of this process, we're going to move into data collection, right, analyzing our operations, who was at these, right, as we have a couple months under them now with them all being completed, and determine how we're going to operate these in the future. Infrastructure comes in stages as well. Composting infrastructure, we've been steadily moving forward. We now have four community-based drop-off stations for food scraps that residents can bring their food scraps to. This is true neighborhood-based infrastructure. We started from a farmer's market booth to these self-serve stations and now have four throughout town. These drop-off stations have kept 30,000 pounds of food waste out of the landfill in 18 months. That's not only huge for our landfill, as well as a lot fewer trash trucks, right, and fuel going to the landfill. It's also really good for emissions, because our food waste leads to methane emissions. So this is a really big deal. Finally, we're working to build carbon dioxide removal infrastructure in northern Arizona. Really proud to say that we've launched the Four Corners Carbon Coalition with Boulder County, Salt Lake City, and Santa Fe, due to a lot of work by Nicole and others. We've recently received proposals for regional carbon dioxide removal projects that involve concrete. The Coalition will soon be able to announce the first grantee of this project, which means that we're going to be putting real funding into regional solutions. We're really excited about this, but judging by the amount of press coverage received over the last few months on this project, nationally, statewide, locally, regionally, there's a lot of people excited about this and about this moving forward and really getting some boots on the ground in terms of carbon dioxide removal. I'm now excited to pass this over to Gracie.
Thank you, Jenny, and good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Gracie Rec Emmer, and I'm the Youth Climate Leadership Vista, and tonight I'm going to review a few more tools that we use to support the Carbon Neutrality Plan, starting with the services we provide to the community. Our definition of services includes incentives, community funding, and direct assistance to community members. And I'm going to give a few examples of the services we provide. The first is the Home Weatherization and Energy Rebates Program, through which we provide financial incentives to community members for home efficiency and electrification. This year, we have focused more on electrification, provided increased incentives, and awarded larger rebates to lower-income households. So far this year, we've been able to distribute over $40,000 in rebates to Flagstaff residents. This is significant, because it is well above our annual budget of $20,000. Most fiscal years, we distribute all of these available funds by December or January, but this year, we were able to supplement our funding with federal recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act. With this federal funding, we will be able to distribute over $200,000 in rebates to community members to incentivize climate action. The Home Weatherization and Energy Rebates Program also provides rebates for electrifying gas stoves, which we know have been in the news recently. And our strategy here is to provide help to those who would like to make a retrofit and provide larger rebates to lower-income families who are more likely to experience health risks. Next, I'll talk a little bit about the Flagstaff HEPA Filter Program, which is a fully grant-funded program that provides high-efficiency particular air purifiers to households who are not particularly, who are particularly susceptible to unhealthy air. This service would also not be possible without our partnership with Wild and Fire. And we recently secured two grants to continue this program and provide more air purifiers to residents. One of these grants was from APS and another from the Fire Adapted Communities Learning Network. Next, through the Northern Arizona Solar Co-op, we are continuing to facilitate rooftop solar on homes across Flagstaff. So this year, 46 households installed solar throughout, through the Solar United Neighbors Project, and that's a total of 325 kilowatts of additional solar energy. And another direct service that we provide to the community is a waste program called Drop Off Day. So this fall, our Drop Off Day event was able to keep 13,000 pounds of material out of our landfills, and this wouldn't be possible without many amazing partners, including the Police Department, the city's Hazardous Product Center, and also external partners. And finally, we are just now beginning to plan the Flagstaff Home Energy Retrofit Program. This is a new program that will provide energy retrofits to low-income families in Flagstaff, helping them to electrify and increase efficiency in their homes. And this was funded through community direct funding in the 2021 Federal Omnibus Spending Package. And we're really just thrilled to be able to make these direct investments into Flagstaff homes, which will help reduce the cost of living while also increasing health and bringing down emissions. So next up is capacity building, which is the work we are always doing to empower residents through education, community-based leadership, and supporting community-led initiatives. And this work is truly about residents supporting each other, whether that's helping your elderly neighbor clear their sidewalks, or lending knowledge about home energy to your friends. And one of our primary capacity building initiatives is the Neighborhood Sustainability Grant Program. This is the climate program's largest budgeted fund, and this month, we were able to distribute $50,000 in grants to residents. And the Sustainability Commission puts a lot of time and effort into funding the hard work of community organizations, community projects. And this year, we just really had an outstanding group of recipients. They're working on really meaningful projects in food, waste, climate action, building energy, public health, and transportation. And just to highlight a couple of these really amazing projects, this year, portions of the Neighborhood Sustainability Grant funding were awarded to the Arizona 4H Youth Foundation, which is working on implementing a horticultural therapy program on the WF Killip Elementary School campus. And that program will use the funding to provide plant-focused educational opportunities for students. And then also to the Harvard Chapel AME Church, which is working on installing energy-efficient lighting improvements to support ongoing community services. Another capacity building program that we have been working on is the Climate Resilience Project. It's a new collaboration between the Sustainability Office and the Flagstaff Public Library, and it was just launched this fall. It offers opportunities for learning through community dialogue and hands-on workshops. So there have been monthly events which have attracted high school and college students, families, and community members with years of experience. And also, as part of this program, the Kocanoo Community College has opened up their book club to all community members and has been providing free books and hosting monthly events as well. And then next, we're always working to strengthen community capacity through our longstanding programs. For example, the Fix-It Clinics we do that work to develop Flagstaff's circular economy, and HEE 101 workshops, which give residents tips and free supplies to make easy, energy-saving fixes in their homes. And we're also starting some new programs, like the Stream Stewards Program this year, which builds on the model of the Adopt an Avenue and the Adopt a Foot initiatives, and activates community members to volunteer to keep our water. and activates community members to volunteer to keep our waterways clean and healthy. And finally, we've been hosting contractor trainings, which are community education events for both residents and contractors to help meet our critical electrification goals. We're working to spread the word about a new way of heating our homes through super-efficient cold-weather heat pumps. And many of these cold-climate heat pumps are rated down to negative twenty-two degrees Fahrenheit, but there are still misconceptions out there about electric heating. So last year, we were able to host these trainings. And in March of this next year, we are, or this year, we are partnering with the Water Services Division to host another training for building professionals on both electrification and water-saving measures. All right, and the last carbon neutrality tool I will share with you before passing off to Jenna is the work we are doing to elevate voices through daily engagement with our community. From May to December, our climate team was able to engage with one thousand eight hundred twenty-two people in a hundred and thirty-seven different activities. And this engagement ranges from attending the community market every week to giving a platform for youth to take climate action along with their peers. So just this fall, I was able to talk to three hundred students in one day at Coconino High School and engaging with students from multiple different classes, from English to social studies. And my favorite part of this whole day was just being able to answer students' questions and help them get connected with direct climate action opportunities in their community that they had never even heard about before. And along with that, NAU also really continues to be a strong partner in climate engagement. And this past semester, we worked with students in the Community University Public Inquiry Program, or QP, to go door-to-door talking to residents about climate communication and energy. And lastly, this April, we are so excited to be bringing back the Youth Climate Summit. The Youth Climate Summit is a collaborative educational event with Willow Bend Environmental Education Center. It's a full-day-long event where Flagstaff students have the opportunity to participate in a variety of climate-related challenges, including building solar or wind structures and presenting on longer-term climate action community projects that they're working on. The summit is really able to bring students together and supports them in developing skills in leadership and presenting, practice in community organization, and knowledge about local climate issues and how they can help address them hands-on as part of the community. This year, the summit's being held in person for the first time since 2019, and we are so excited. We are asking the council and the community members to help us spread the word, especially to any students or educators that you may know. So thank you so much for your support, and I'm so happy to pass off to Jenna Ortega now to continue the conversation on elevating community voices.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Jenna Ortega, Climate Engagement Coordinator. So grateful to be here with you all today. So another way we elevate community voices is to build connections and relationships with the Flagstaff community and our climate program. It's also my favorite part of my job. So even though our work does involve long-term efforts to reduce emissions, even more importantly, it's to bring community voices into the conversation and as leaders at the planning table. The only way that we're going to achieve our climate goals is to create a culture of trust where community members are included in the decision-making processes. So when we are developing a policy or creating infrastructure or trying to improve one of our services, we now have three groups of community members, leaders and experts on different topics to guide us in our work. Each one provides a unique insight and challenges us to think in ways that we don't often consider. So we know that climate action has co-benefits, takes collaboration, but our business advisors teach us how to talk about that in a way that is approachable to the community. The youth members energize us. Every meeting, we walk away with a renewed sense of urgency. And after only three meetings with our equity advisory members, we already have a list of ways that we can start improving our existing work and where we need to start to make the greatest impact. I cannot begin to express how important these climate advisory groups are to our work. So reaching our climate goals is going to require action from every institution in Flagstaff and around the world. For that reason, we do a lot of work to support our partners. This is across the region, across the state, and even across the U.S. We lend support to cities from Mesa all the way up to Spokane, Washington. And our service on these different committees allows us to constantly stay up on the best practices. Locally, there's also a lot going on as well. Metro Plan is working on the Stride Forward Regional Transportation Plan, and they are working to set a five-year vision for Flagstaff's transportation systems. This plan will include a scenario that will set us up to achieve our transportation-related carbon neutrality goals. And a new addition to all of our collaboration efforts is participation in a biomass working group. And overall, we are really excited and encouraged by the efforts at our partners, at NAU, at FUSD, and at Coconino County. All right, onto the fun stuff, moving into our numbers. So this is how we work to illustrate climate impacts and action through data analysis. So every day, each of us is moving around the community, headed to the grocery store or to an appointment. And many of us probably aren't thinking about all the planning and decision-making that went into each road or each building. But each of those decisions impacts how many miles it will take us to reach our destination. And a measurement for this is called vehicle miles traveled, or you'll hear VMT quite often. And this captures all the miles driven across Flagstaff. It's a really important metric, but we haven't been great at using it for each individual project that we talk about here. And so a new building or a new road could really further and increase our dependency on cars and how we move around. Or instead, it could allow us each that choice to be able to use a healthier and more affordable transportation option if we wanted. And so to help us better understand these impacts, we partnered with Metro Plan to create a calculator that will measure VMT for all of our individual transportation projects. And something really fun and a big deal to highlight is that the CDP, formerly known as the Carbon Disclosure Project, listed Flagstaff as a global leader for demonstrating effective environmental action, climate leadership, and transparency. And finally, we are analyzing our electricity rates across two hundred-plus APS accounts for city facilities. This is to ensure that we're all on the correct rate plan, but also importantly, to realize any potential cost savings for the city. And so everything we've talked about doing in the community and up until this point, from reducing emissions to strengthening our systems, we also have to do on the municipal side of things. So we're going to have to be leaders to really build trust in our community, and we can do this by actively demonstrating the city's commitment to climate action. And this leadership we show will hopefully be reflected throughout our community. And so one way we are working on this is our citywide energy conservation contract, which continues to move ahead at full speed. Staff are currently finalizing the scope of Phase One, which will focus on interior and exterior lighting upgrades, mechanical upgrades, building envelope upgrades, and water conservation measures. So council, we will be speaking with you again in March with a request to approve the Phase One of the contract. And we know to make the greatest impact towards carbon neutrality, we have to work to align our policies, which we've talked about a lot today, with our climate goals. And one example of the power of policy is that by recently revising the Sustainable Buildings Resolution, we are now able to not only better mitigate greenhouse gas emissions, but also increase the number of available and affordable housing units. And by continuing to have conversations about all the operational changes needed to electrify our city fleet and bring in electric vehicles, we can be an example to others, including all of our local businesses. And our fleet continues to get greener with the addition of three electric vehicles in 2022. And last, another great thing this year that we are really proud of is through our partnership with APS, we are now powering city operations with a hundred percent carbon-free electricity through their newly-launched Green Power Partners Program, kind of a mouthful. And so as a participant, the city will be able to make really important progress to becoming carbon neutral and be ahead of schedule to meet that 2025 goal of using a hundred percent renewable electricity for city programs. And with that, I will pass it back to Nicole.
Thank you, Jenna. Mayor and Council, I would like to take this opportunity to shift the discussion a bit to discuss the realities of the Carbon Neutrality Plan and the climate action commitments that the city has made. And we, like many in the city, are financially challenged, staff limited, and state-restricted. Our climate action-based budget is small. It's just over a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. This does not include personnel nor one-time funding or grants. This year, for example, we have a robust amount of money of one-time funding that was made available through the federal stimulus funding and a federal earmark grant, as Gracie mentioned. Our key priorities with all of these funds is to get fiscal assistance into our community and through our offerings and our services. This is our priority. Our team is small, and it's too small to do all the work that needs to be done. And because we are preempted by the state in numerous ways, our work is even more challenging and disjointed, but our staff are critical to ensuring that we meet the goals that have been set in the Carbon Neutrality Plan. Our staff are the first line of engagement, but they are working hard and diligently, not only to create policies, but to inspire, empower, and educate, and hopefully encourage action. The reality is, it's 2023. We've set a goal for being carbon neutral by 2030. And we have set a strong foundation over the last year and a half that we are really proud of to start taking bold action. We will be back frequently in front of council with policy recommendations, with programmatic ideas and goals that we would like support with. But with that in mind, I would like to share that we have a lot of work to do. And we need critical updates to our codes, our standards, and our ability to fund the actions outlined in the Carbon Neutrality Plan. And as I mentioned, we will be back in the coming months. We hope to have some exciting revisions proposed to the engineering standards as well as our zoning code. And we will also be back with our internal partners to request and award a contract for a comprehensive analysis of the zoning code previously mentioned. And I know the council has heard a fair amount about this. But I do want to take a moment to address the graph on this slide. And here, it illustrates the pace of change that is needed to achieve our climate goals by 2030. We essentially have to go from zero to sixty in terms of emission reductions in every single sector. And for example, it's just not what, we need to add a few electric vehicle charging stations. We need to begin seeing dramatic changes in our community's vehicles this year. And we need to set up that infrastructure so we can encourage and empower our community members to join us. And while doing that, we also have to dramatically improve our bike and pedestrian and transit infrastructure so we can hold our VMT steady. We need the all-of-the-above scenario, and we have to begin rapidly reducing emissions yesterday to meet our goals. So let's put this into perspective. Our reality is already plagued by climate variability and change. The damage and consequences of climate change, especially extreme weather events like mega droughts and more intense storms, requires urgent and ambitious adaptation measures, which continue to be inadequately addressed and funded across the United States. Governments need to pick up the pace and show the necessary ambition on mitigation, adaptation, and finance in a balanced way. Cities and regions are the first responders to climate change and to the climate crisis, but we can't do this alone. And while the municipality has made incredible strides in advancing its commitments to climate action, we need all hands on deck, and we need to empower our most vulnerable community members. We have a living laboratory of what happens in a community that is plagued by extreme climate events. We need to find solutions together. That means that we all can have varying opinions, but in the end, don't we all want a healthy community and a community that provides opportunity and embraces and treats people equally? We need to inspire action, and we need to invest in action. We also need to talk about climate productively. There's a lot of divisiveness about climate action and the full spectrum. But again, going back to this concept that we have shared goals and we have commonalities, we can talk about climate effectively and productively. And we need to invest in our action. I'm really excited to build off of the comment that Jenny shared about the Four Corners Carbon Coalition. We'll be back with some exciting news here, hopefully, in the next week or two. And that really threads into sparking innovation. There's a lot of opportunity in climate action. And the Four Corners Carbon Coalition, so that is a mouthful, is a perfect example of those opportunities. And we need to focus on those state preemptions and work with coalition across the state, which we are currently having conversations with our city, our friends throughout the state in cities and counties about doing just that. And so clearing that way so we can do this work more readily and more swiftly. So Mayor and Council, we need everyone to participate, and we need you to help us build a stronger community. We need your leadership, your continued support and your engagement and your participation in climate action. We encourage your creative ideas and involvement in our community's effort. And just to quote the United Nations Secretary General, "Climate action is everyone's responsibility. We know what we must do." If you need inspiration, we do have some inspiring actions to take on our website, and that's flagstaff.ac/cclimate for those of you at home. But please join us, and thank you so much for your time. Happy to answer any questions or address comments.
Thank you, Nicole, and the rest of the sustainability team. Unless council members have clarifying questions they'd like to ask, I would like to move into public comment. Yes?
When you say clarifying questions, do you mean questions that we, that want answers to or comments about what was said? So are we going to have a discussion later?
Yes.
I guess, okay.
Yes, thank you. Questions? Anyway, all right. So our first public commenter is Laura, and I believe it's Kessler. Hello?
Hello. I think this is my, hi, Laura Kessler. I've been an off-and-on resident here in Flagstaff since 1984. I believe I only have three minutes, is that right? And I think this is my first time ever talking to anyone at city council in such a forum, so I'm a little nervous right now. I'll try to get out as much as I can within the next three minutes. Long-term resident here in Flagstaff since January 3rd, 1984. I have a history degree from NAU, 1998. I came down today for two reasons. I wanted to hear more about the CNP, and also, I think we're going to talk about the Schultz fire issue and flooding, and I'm impacted by that as well, so I might come up and have another question on that. But I'm almost sixty years old. I've lived overseas on and off. I've always had a footprint here, either with having a house here or my kids. My daughter is an ecology, majoring in ecology, and she'll graduate this year from U of A. I have strong, I have close family members who have worked for every Forest Service, every environmental agency in Arizona, National, I used to work for State Parks. And like I said, I've been around for sixty years. And I love everything you guys have to say, except there's just too much ambiguity. I've learned that even if you have the most perfectly executed plan that everybody's on board with and excited about, something's going to go wrong. And boy, I just get that feeling. I've been starting to learn more about seeing the Carbon Neutrality Plan, and I just have so many questions. I know hundreds of people are supporting this, but I have reservations. And I'm going to be the devil's advocate here as long as I have time. And I want to know, number one, is the people pushing this prepared to deal with the problems of when this policy becomes regressive and starts hurting the community? Is there a backup plan to do that? Because the last few days, just three days alone, I've been talking to friends who have concerns about the CNP. And these are just a few. And these are just a few of what they've told me. They would like the City Council to focus more directly on local issues, not federal or global. How much is this going to cost? And what is the benefit cost benefit to the local taxpayers? Is this the small-- how big is the impact going to be for Flagstaff? Ageism. There's a lot of elderly people out there who are very concerned about they're going to have to walk or ride their bikes in snowstorms. Hundreds of, I've heard that hundreds of people who want this, but I believe there are thousands of people, and there's probably thousands of people who want this too. But there, the people who are very upset about this, or at least curious about this, are not organized, and I'll end with that.
No, 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 please, continue. I'm taking notes here on what you've heard from the community, and I would--
Thank you.
I would like to hear more.
So, but they're not organized. These are people who are either working, or they're elderly, or they have children, and they just are not organized to voice their concerns, their fears, or their disapproval. And so not, this is not a priority for everyone in Flagstaff, and I think you probably even know that. And maybe it's based on inaccurate facts, but maybe it's not, because there does seem to be a lot of unknowns. Their concern about the grid collapse, all, everybody becoming so dependent on electricity. What about the grid collapse? They're closing down power plants. Somebody just told me this yesterday. The power plant up at Lake Powell is in trouble. They're talking about not maybe having enough water to generate enough power. Meanwhile, we're going farther toward electricity. I remember when everybody was so happy we got gas. Remember the wood stoves and the big pollution cloud over Flagstaff every morning in the wintertime? I do. And electric was expensive back then, and I think people want to be insured, be assured that our electric is not going to go up. This is a huge, a huge issue. People are talking about leaving Flagstaff because they're so scared. People are talking about the pollution. What about the pollution from mining for these battery components for EVs? Oh, and the small roads issue. Do we really want smaller roads? Now, listen, I don't like traffic. I lived in Honolulu for a while. Talk about traffic, it's awful. I couldn't wait to get back to Flagstaff. But, you know, I don't know if you know about Sedona, but they put in traffic circles to alleviate traffic, and they're too small. They've got just as much traffic as they did before because the roads are too small. So that's one of those disasters that can happen if you're not prepared or researched the issue deeply enough. So I hope people are really looking into what are the cons of having smaller roads, because maybe not everybody can get to bicycles to go back and forth over the Lone Tree Overpass. And again, if I'm wrong, I apologize, but these are things that I'm hearing. I have a close family member who's in Fish and Wildlife for years, a career. And I know how dangerous those solar farms are to animals. I don't know if anybody else knows this, but they're not good. They have wiped out eagles, the amount of raptors that are getting killed in these windmills and solar things. I think we have one out in west of Arizona or west of Flagstaff. There's a lot of deaths going on out there with the birds. And also, somebody brought up NAU overinvolvement. There's some resentment in the community about NAU becoming too involved in Flagstaff policy. I think there are people, and I'm an NAU grad, but I would like to see a little more separation between Flagstaff and NAU. NAU does great things, but as with everything, it's not all black and white, or it's not all good. There's problems there, too. Let me make sure I've got everything written, said here. Oh, and management. You know, I, like I said, I have family members who have worked for Kaibab Forest and Coconino Forest. And a lot of these problems are not due to climate change. They're due to management problems. And that's one of the things I'm not happy with. The flood issues, because I think there was some mismanagement on the side of the Forest Service. And some of those big fires are not, they may be triggered by drought, but they're not all because of climate change. There's, I think we should have some management change before we really blame everything on the climate. There are things we can do now without jumping into something full with both feet where we really don't know it's where the problems are going to come. And they are going to come. And we just want to make sure that you are listening to other voices, including voices that may not, that may not support the CNP project. And again, they are unorganized, but they're there. Thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And we have one more public commenter, and then I will ask staff if they want to address any of those concerns. So who do we have online?
Mayor and Council, I have Travis Smith for Public Comment. Travis, you can go ahead and speak.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'm willing to bet that you all are hoping that I'll be singing praise to City Flagstaff's Carbon Neutrality Plan. I am not, and nor will I attain the delusion that this city has created something original or meaningful. You have not. The Flagstaff's Carbon Neutrality Plan has nearly the exact same language and plan as the following cities: Albuquerque, New Mexico, enacted in 2021; Bozeman, Montana, 2022; Boise, Idaho, 2021; Helena, Montana, 2019; Salt Lake, Utah, 2009; Denver, Colorado, 2018; Tucson, Arizona, draft plan in action; Santa Rosa, California, 2005; Salem, Oregon, 2020; Salem, Washington, 2023-- or excuse me, 2013; El Paso, Texas, February 2018; and Anchorage, Alaska, May of 2019. Oh, you might think this is just a Western thing, right? You're wrong. Roanoke, Virginia has a draft plan in action. Boston, Massachusetts has a draft plan in action. Atlanta, Georgia has a draft plan in action. Portland, Maine has a draft plan in action. At this point, I'd like to point out that every one of these above-city climate action plans or carbon neutrality plans has nearly the exact same language as your Flagstaff Carbon Neutrality Plan. How is that possible? How is it possible nearly every large city in this country has the exact same language and goals and plans and targets? It's not possible. So who is writing these carbon neutrality plans? Who's funding them? How many taxpayer dollars are being used to fund studies and conduct surveys when it seems like the decisions and the science is already decided? And do you expect us to believe that all these cities came up with the exact same plan in the span of a few years? I'd like to take the time to elaborate for the audience exactly who is behind this. It is the Rockefeller Foundation via their Resilient Cities Network, where I quote from their website directly. "The resilient cities network legacy is built on the 100 resilient cities initiative, pioneered by the Rockefeller Foundation in 2013 as part of its global centennial initiative. The initiative was built on a substantial investment from the Rockefeller Foundation, which enables cities to hire a chief resilience officer, developing a science strategy, access pro bono services from the public and private sector and NGO partners. Over years of deep engagement with city leaders, communities, and the private sector, this initiative enabled transformational changes in cities through support of resilience plans and early implementation of projects." Well, folks, there you have it. All these carbon neutrality and climate action plans had developed courtesy of the Standard Oil Monopoly. Did you really all know that you're parroting and promoting the same globalist agendas straight from the corporate oil conglomerates? Do you care? Or are you living in denial that there is always another side to the argument?
Thank you.
Believing that these same corporate leaders and politicians are here to help solve--
Mayor, unless there's a, sorry to interrupt, Mayor. Unless there's a question from another council member, his time has expired under the rules of procedure. There would have to be a question from a council member forum to continue.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much for your comments.
I have a question. I have a question.
Thank--
I would like to know how much the city is spending.
Your time is up, sir? Thank you. So Nicole, would you, would you prefer to have council members make statements and ask questions, and then you speak? Or do you want to go ahead and address these and then have council members discuss?
Mayor, thank you. I'm happy to have the council offer comment and then can address all comments at that time.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, Council, do we have--
Mayor? I put in a card. I don't know why you don't--
I need Tom Pearson.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I cut you down for the next item.
Oh.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Pearson, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Thank you for allowing me the time to make a few comments. I'm a retired Navy Metoc, that's meteorologist, oceanographer. So I have a little bit of experience with climate and weather, mostly weather, not climate so much. But I just wanted to make two quick comments. One, about underlying assumptions. One, of course, is that the climate change is happening, and it, that solidity or firmness is based primarily or largely on the Climate Prediction Center, CPC, the National Climate Prediction Center. Just an aside comment, as we all know, we've had record snowfalls. We've, the front page of the paper indicates we've had 60 inches of snow when the average is 20. I've got a little diagram here. You won't be able to see the details, but I think you'll see in general. This is the Climate Prediction Center's forecast for January, February, March. The brown is drought. We are in the 40% drought line for their forecast. This was issued December 15, saying 40% chance or chance of 40% reduction of our normal rainfall. That would be 12 inches of snow. We are up to 60 inches right now. My only point in saying that is that these predictions are not 100% firm. That doesn't mean that the forecast for climate change is not going to be approximately right, but it could be exactly wrong, too. So my advice is, don't put all your marbles in one basket or all your eggs in one basket. Take these forecasts and predictions with a degree of doubt and have alternate plans if they don't come true. The other thing I would like to say is to compare the Dark Sky City Plan with the Carbon Neutrality Plan. The Dark Sky City Plan, okay, it's been a great success in Flagstaff. Why? Because every light that's reduced, every reduction in the wattage of the light bulbs and so forth affects directly the dark sky, makes the sky of Flagstaff darker. What does carbon neutrality do? It reduces the amount of carbon emissions we have, but those emissions are global. And in the global context, China, India, Russia produce almost three times as much carbon as we do, and they have no intention of reducing. Here is a diagram. These are the, this goes from 1850 to 2020. The green, I'll just say quickly, the green is, shows Western countries, US and Western countries.
Can I ask a question of you?
Sure.
Where, is this a reference that we could find?
It is. I got it out of, I've got the, I've got the, it's OurWorldDataOrg, CO2 and Other Greenhouse Gas Emissions. I can get you the link if you'd like to have it. But in, just quickly--
Would you be able to email that to us?
I will. Quickly, it shows, I think you can see, the red is China and India. You can see they are dramatically increasing from year to year. The curve is going like this. We're going down, but on a global sense, we're, our impact is absolutely negligible and will not, so we can do all the wonderful things to reduce carbon in the atmosphere, but it's not like the Dark Sky City Plan--
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. I'm sorry to cut you off.
Yes, you get the point. I understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will email the links to you.
Thank you. All right, council members. Who has a comment? Question, discussion point? Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's address a couple things. Is climate change happening? I remember 30 years ago, talking to my boss where I worked. He didn't believe in climate change. It's not theories. We can see it with our own eyes. It's out there. We've got storms on steroids. So that's a quote from Al Gore. I see Nicole's writing that one down. Nicole, I was at a meeting where I actually got to shake hands with Al Gore, and he commented that the storms are on steroids. Yes, we're getting lower lows. Yes, we're getting more snow when we don't expect it. Is that expected? Yes. It's called turbulence. I'm a mechanical engineer. I got an A in thermodynamics. When you put more energy into a system, which is what we're doing, is we increase the temperature of the world, and there's no doubt that's happening, you create higher highs, higher lows, and it's called turbulence. So none of this is surprising. So we are seeing the effects. I want to make a comment that there's a big push to get us into electric transportation, stoves, heating, et cetera. That makes sense if the power is generated at the power plant by renewable sources. In other words, non-carbon burning surfaces. So I think, Nicole, I was thinking, maybe next time you guys have one of these presentations, maybe you can give us an update on what percentage of our energy, or our electric energy, is produced by renewable sources versus it's just, you know, or are they burning oil or natural gas? And then we're counting it as pollution-free, but it's only pollution-free if at the generating station it's pollution-free. You understand where I'm going. I didn't say that too well. So next time, maybe you can include that in that, because I think it's a critical part of it. Regarding the comment that what we do in Flagstaff is miniscule or insignificant, on a certain level, there's truth to that. This is just one little city in a great big world. So why do I care about this? Why do I think that Flagstaff should go forward with this? Well, for a couple of reasons. One is that we are part of it, and the only way that we solve this problem is if everyone does their little part. The other thing is example. It's true that, that certain countries, probably China and India or whatever, their emissions are going up, and they're not increasing, they're not decreasing like they need to, and they do need to. So how do we make that happen? Well, what we do here is an example, and that's sort of moral energy, so to speak, to convince these people, you need to, you need to come along with us and do something. So if we ignore the problem, that doesn't solve anything. And if we work on the problem, that may or may not convince these other countries. But to me, it's obvious, we have to do it. Arizona needs to do it. The United States needs to do it. And until we get the United States doing it, then how are we going to ask these other countries to jump on board and be part of it? We've been having some worldwide conferences on this, and some progress is being made. And we need to do more of that. So I'm supportive of what we're doing. Every little detail, I'm not sure, you know. We may disagree on some details. We may disagree on some details along the way. But the basic idea of, do we need to do something, to me, is a no-brainer. So I'll leave it at that. I may have some more comments in a minute. Thank you, Nicole. And Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Matthews has a question.
Can you hear me now? I'm on my phone, sorry. Lot of technical issues. Nicole, I had, you and I spoke about this about a year or so ago, but I was just curious on where we were with a device to measure our carbon emissions. Right now, how I understand it is, we don't really have a device to know how much emissions were released into the atmosphere, given especially that we have the Ponderosa Forest around us. Has there been any updates on when we would get that?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Matthews. Yes, we are working with a local laboratory, Crosswalk Labs, here in Flagstaff, on that very initiative. And so this will actually allow us, when we can have some real-time data points, to be very targeted at our outreach, our programmatic efforts, and also policy. So I'll definitely, hopefully, well, look forward to having an update for the council, hopefully in the next six months.
Thank you. And I will note that Jenny wrote in the, in the comment that today, the APS grid is made up of 50% clean energy, with a goal for it to be 100% clean by 2050, and will, of course, go into detail on this next time per your request. So, thank you, Jenny. And Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, and also thanks to the public commenters who spoke up this evening. I have a question and a comment. So the question is going back to the presentation on the different rebate programs and other offerings that are available to low-income housing, or low-income residents. My question is really just, what considerations are being made, or how is that information being assured to get to the folks that need it? So how do people know that these programs are available? And how are we making sure that that information gets out to the people that it applies to?
Great. Thank you for that question. Jenny, would you like to take that?
Sure, I'd be happy. Thanks, Councilmember House. So, a couple of different ways, and I will say, this is something we're continually working to improve on. Jenna mentioned, we, the Equity Advisory Group had a lot of comments for us. One was specifically this, of how do we reach more communities in Flagstaff? How do we meet more, reach more residents where they are, right? And so this is something we are working on. We are actually building a campaign this month to start communication, because the really exciting thing, we didn't get into detail, but we have local rebates that have additional, higher rebates for low-income families. So do the feds, right? And so starting January 1st, we have pretty strong rebates from the federal government, particularly for low-income families. And so that is a big focus of what we're going to be starting, basically in February, to get the word out. One thing is that we have been running ads on CAF radio every single month, since, gosh, July, I think, or June, on this program. And so that's just one part where we're trying to reach more folks. We have extensive social media campaigning, where we try to get to broad audiences with that, our newsletter, et cetera. But we know we have more work to do. The first thing, though, was, we've tried to invest right now in CAF radio, because that's maybe a different audience than we normally talk to. We're trying to do more, and again, we will, we're kind of building that campaign now, now that we actually have information about the federal rebates going out. And what we want to do is communicate about both the local rebates and the federal rebates, so that folks can stack them, and that they can be accessible to those folks of lower income.
And if I may add on to, thank you, Jenny. And if I may add on, one thing that we experienced, Councilmember House, when we had federal funding for our retrofit program back in 2008, and we were able to carry that program for a little over three years, is that trusted voices and word of mouth are incredibly impactful. And so we're trying to earn trust in the community and lean on key community members to also help spread the word. And you did hear that our partnership with the QP program at NAU, and having students go door-to-door and knock on our community members', you know, front door, to ask them what they even know about our programs. And what we found out is, a lot of people don't. And so advertising is one element, but we really believe that that on-the-ground work is going to be critical in getting this information out. Frankly, our programmatic budgets are quite small, and we see these resources dwindle very quickly. With the federal earmark funds, the 700-plus thousand that we are going to be able to, we're working on getting distributed, it's being distributed through HUD, we know that we need to approach this differently, so we can get that out. We have some really good experience with the HEPA program, and working with key community partners, our most vulnerable community members for those air filters. We will also take, you know, kind of the successes from that outreach, and then collaboration into consideration as well. And we'd love any suggestions or ideas from the council.
Great. Thank you both so much for that answer. And really, that drives right into the comment that I was going to make, was just ensuring that we are doing some of that door-to-door and direct outreach to folks who may not get access to this information otherwise. And just in closing, the only other major thing that really stood out to me in some of the comments was, in one of the last presentations that we had on the carbon neutrality plan, and it was particularly when it was presenting the budget, and looking at, you know, what's the cost of this and what's the return. One of the comments that I made at that time was just talking about the need for that community education, and ensuring, how do we ensure that the community truly and literally buys into this? If we're seeing this spread in the numbers, given the cost versus the return, or just given that concern of, that was expressed tonight with Ms. Kessler, and the comments that she made. I think it's clear that that is very much needed, and however we get that message across, and I'm not saying that we're going to convince everyone, and certainly, it's, I think, in part, a split between the information that we share and the information that we receive, and hearing some of those concerns, and just recognizing that we have to be able to address that. So that's just going to be very important to me, seeing this move forward.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. And thank you for segueing into my comment. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you to the public for your comments tonight. Much appreciated on that. And I was wondering, putting my business hat on, how often does the Business Advisory Group meet? And can you share with me the businesses that are participating in that? Thank you for the question. We meet once a month, which is not enough, but there's, you know, trying to balance between asking community members, especially local business owners, to provide even more of their time is challenging. I wish they could guide me every day, but that is not feasible. And so some of the local businesses, I can follow up with an exact list for you as well, but we have Freaky Foot Tours is on there, Mother Road Brewing, ooh, I'm going to fail up here with my list. So maybe, if it's okay, I could follow up with you, with all of you, with the exact list of the local businesses that are involved, so I don't miss anybody. I would appreciate that. And I'm wondering, how has the participation been? Do you have a lot of them showing up to the monthly meetings? And how are we continuing to engage our business community in this? Yeah, thank you. Attendance did drop a little bit in December and January, which we kind of expected, but up until that point, we did have nearly perfect attendance of the, like, 11 businesses that are there. And there was a lot of educational components, like the first six or so months, of trying to get them up to date on the carbon neutrality plan and all the different programs we do. And right now, starting a few weeks ago, they have decided that they are ready to go on their own journey and start a project. And so they are working on, they're really into collaboration, is their thing, coming together with businesses. So they're figuring out their plan, but they really want to work on kind of creating a network of resilient businesses in Flagstaff that might be able to help each other by sharing resources and working together when it comes to emergencies with climate and everything. So I'm really excited to see where their project goes. That's exciting to hear, and I look forward to updates on that. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for this very informative presentation. I enjoyed hearing all the stuff that I haven't heard in a while, again. And so thank you for all the time and effort and energy that you put into this plan. When you hear me asking questions, tough questions, do not think that that's a no-vote. Not, and I mean, we're not voting on anything, but do not hear me saying that I'm not supportive of the work that's being done. Hear me asking the tough question, because we need to think it all the way through. And so part of what I want, questions and comments, is I want people to think about how we think things all the way through, from beginning to end. So we've got this plan, and we're working it. We're getting information out to people. We've got these rebates, all of this stuff. So think about this. So I get a rebate to put in an electric furnace, okay? But my house is 50 years old, and I don't have the infrastructure to power that electric furnace. How do we help people do that? And you don't need to give me an answer. This is just thinking it through. So what does that do to my rebate? So I want to participate, but I can't. So again, I'm in the, in the group that is sometimes being kind of penalized, because I don't have the money to go out and upgrade my electrical to 220 or 240, whatever it is, that is needed to run this. So that's one of the things that I want us to think about. How do we do that? The other thing that I want us to think about is that we have to figure out how to help people get to this plan. So I'm a senior citizen. I don't need to tell you how old I am, because it's not really all that important, but, so when I leave my house Saturday morning, because I have, I plan out my day, you know, I've got this to do, drop off the cleaners, whatever, and so I'm trying to figure out what is the best route, so that I'm not going back and forth, okay? Because I'm probably going to still keep driving my car, okay? But I'm not going to have to drive it every day. But I am going to have to drive it. And so perhaps helping people think about ways that they can reduce. A 70-year-old woman is probably not going to be on a bicycle on Milton, so it's not going to happen, okay? So we have to make sure that we're helping people to get to where we want them to get to. The other thing that I would, that I would say is that, I've lived in Flagstaff now for over 30 years, and I have definitely seen the weather change. I used to be able to set my watch in the summertime by the monsoons. They would come at 2:00, and they'd end at about 2:30, 2:45. The sun would come out, and everything would be dried up in about 30 minutes. That's not happening anymore, okay? We used to have huge snowfalls, and, except for this last week. That's not happening anymore. I can remember years when we had no snowfalls, maybe an inch or two. And that was scary. And so I think that helping people to understand, maybe providing some of that history, maybe providing some of that background, maybe having people talk about what they remember, how they remember things. There are people who have been gardening in Flagstaff for 60 years, and I'm working with a lady for the last five years that I've been, she's been teaching me to garden. And every year, she says to me, oh, this is, this is, this is not like it used to be. This is not like it used to be, you know? And so I think that those folks who have lived here, worked here, and all of that kind of stuff, could probably be helpful to you in helping to educate people. So look at, look at other folks. Sometimes I think that we get concerned, or people get concerned because they don't see me, you know, or they don't see my next-door neighbor, or they don't see my friend, or they don't see any of those people having these kind of conversations. And so they just kind of think it's just us, whoever us is. So I would just encourage you to think about, how do we work smarter and not necessarily harder? And then the last thing, and I'll be done, is that boots on the ground, and you hear me say that all the time, that's one of my favorite things, and I like knocking on people's doors. And I like going to programs and events, and headed out to, you know, events and activities all over the city, to try and see if I can get people excited about what we're doing. And so I'm just encouraging you to do that. So I haven't actually done that, but I do get out and about to as many events as I can. And so I would encourage the staff, and I know that's asking you all a lot, you work 40-hour weeks and more, but when you have the opportunity, I would think that would be a good thing to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you for those wonderful ideas. And if I may, Mayor, just, you had some very key, critical issues. We are working to try to shift the rebate concept to pre-bate, to ensure that we can get money. Rebates are there to incentivize, but they're there to address critical needs, financial needs. We're continuing to penalize individuals who don't have that investment, those funds, to invest in efficiencies, and wait for a rebate to come after they've done them. We've been working with our legal team to see how we can create a pre-bate structure as well. And so thank you for bringing that up. And that is something we are looking very deeply into and are very committed to, trying to bridge that challenge more. But you're exactly right. There's challenges with our programs because of that. And then I did want to say, thank you for trip planning. And yes, we will continue to work with folks and try to encourage folks. The boots on the ground is really important, and we have an opportunity to better tell our story. So thank you.
Vice Mayor Aslan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi, Nicole, hey Jenny, Jenna, and Gracie. Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you for all the continued hard work on this multi-year process that has been a long time coming, and we're in the stretch here, but not the final stretch. We've got a long way to go. I just have a quick comment, and I do have a question for you. You know, I, of course, you know, I'm very supportive and bought in to your efforts, and you can always count on my continued stalwart support to see this plan move forward on the surest footing that we can offer. Great conversation today, especially important with a new council. And this is my fourth council working on these issues now. I will never forget how ground, how rooted in the ground these efforts are, how these questions and these concerns and these strategies and policies are coming from the community. And I will, I will never lose sleep over the fact that what we're buttressed by up here in, in working on these tough questions and policy initiatives, is the backing, the full backing of a very large swath of the Flagstaff community, which has shown a lot of leadership, and will continue to do so, and will continue to step forward as needed. One of the things that really struck me today that I hadn't heard before, maybe you've said it before, but, you know, it takes four times, four different councils for me to hear things sometimes. The fact that cities and towns are the first responders in the climate crisis. I really like that language. I really like the imagery and the symbology behind that. You know, it is true that Flagstaff alone is never going to get us down to 1.5 degrees Celsius. We're not going to prevent, through our efforts, that 1.9 breach that will be cataclysmic for the globe long-term. No one's fooling themselves about that. But we do know that we have an opportunity to walk the walk, to talk the talk, to show leadership. And one of the things that your group has said over and over throughout the years, that I have heard, is that- years, that I have heard, is that in order to keep our global temperature rise within balance of the extremes, there needs to be early adopters to these programs. There has to be communities that step forward first to offset the sluggishness of other larger governments and municipalities and global entities. So I just want to acknowledge that you've been saying that all along and that I was able to hear it at least once. I do have a question for you. There was a big story this week, a really good story about SRP and a large solar array that's going in somewhere here in northern Arizona near Flagstaff. I'm not sure what that has to do with APS, what that has to do with the Corporation Commission. I know SRP has their own target goals for lowering emissions. It wasn't clear to me in that newspaper article this week how Flagstaff will benefit from this array going in at the CObar Ranch. I'm not even specifically sure where that is around here. I don't know if you can offer any clarifying comments or context just to help share with us where that is in the landscape of the things that we're working on. My guess is that it mostly has to do less with Flagstaff and more with Arizona as a whole, but maybe you can comment on that.
Yeah, thank you very much, Councilmember Aslan, Vice Mayor Aslan. It's important for the grid in Arizona. So yes, as you said, it's a very important project for the broader grid in Arizona. And one thing that when we talk a lot about electrification, and we can do in our next update, revisit to the dialogue around electrification. But the more demand we put on the grid, the more room there is for renewables on the grid. And there are a lot of dynamics at play with the Western grid, and I don't pretend to fully understand even 2% of the complexities of the grid. But the Western grid is, we are very coupled with the state of California. California is coupled with Arizona. California pays Arizona to take renewables off the grid. We turn around and sell energy back to California when the renewables aren't generating. I mean, it's a very complex, very heavily invested, traded commodity. With that in mind, the more renewables that we can set up in the Southwest, the cleaner the grid will get. And more electrification ties into that. So that need for renewables. So electric vehicles are often thought of as moving batteries. They are battery storage for the utility. They're battery storage for the utility at certain times when there's too many, and I'm going to just use that very casual term. And if my peers at APS are watching, don't criticize me later for the approach that I'm taking here. But the electric vehicles are moving batteries. And so when there's too much renewable energy being generated, those batteries can, if you will, take energy off the grid and make room. So the complexities around electrification and electric vehicles, it's fascinating. That's why we are plotting more large-scale renewable systems in Arizona on the grid. We also need to ensure that, within that context, that there, you know, we encourage our neighbors to ensure that they're going into smart business deals, equitable deals as well. And I think that that's also an important element of being leaders in this space. And we work very closely with our partners, you know, throughout, as Jenna mentioned, the region and the state, to share our experience in working with power purchase agreements, our work with APS on the Green Power Partners Program and so forth. So yeah, I'm happy to follow up a little bit more and dive into the SRP contract. I haven't had time to do that, though.
Thank you. And I do want to hear more from you, Nicole. I just have a couple of things that I would like to say. This recent storm, you know, we've been having conversations about the resiliency of our neighborhoods and neighbors getting to know neighbors. And I see lots of opportunity in the work that you're doing in terms of building those relationships between and among neighbors. And it's part of the work that you're doing that I'm really excited about. I'm excited about lots of your work and supportive of the direction that you're going. I want you to know that. Something, you know, I have been involved with advocacy in Flagstaff around walkability for a long time. And there has always been a hesitancy because it seems that some of us jump to you're going to make everyone walk. And, you know, we continue to say that is not what we have in mind. We're just talking about making it more enjoyable should you choose to walk. And who doesn't, you know, want that? And Jenna, as you were speaking, I wrote down, you know, can these local businesses host events at their business, you know, to showcase what they're doing and also to recruit additional businesses? And you guys are so far ahead of us that I'm sure you've already thought of it. But I just want to thank you all again for the work that you've put in. And I know that I don't even need to say this, but I will just say it out loud, that I encourage us all to continue to listen to everyone in the community and to take that input. And one of the things that I really appreciate about your team is your willingness to have those difficult conversations and to engage with people who may or may not be supportive of the work that you're doing. So thank you for that. And I believe that you have some additional things that you would like to share with us.
Absolutely. And if I may, Mayor, add on to the enjoyable walk and safe walk. That is something we hear a lot in the community, is that safety for cyclists and pedestrians is key. And we do talk about mode shift in trying to encourage people to walk or bike or roll to where they need to go. But we also have to have the infrastructure to ensure that they can do so safely and feel comfortable doing it. So we have a lot of catching up to do in that space. On that note, and thank you for that compliment, and I do hope, I see Ms. Kessler is still here, we would be, I'd be happy to sit down and meet with you and talk and address some of your questions. And then also, yeah, hear if you have some suggestions for us on how we can ensure that we're not being ageist and dive into that more. And equally, I don't know if Mr. Smith is still on the phone. I don't see him. But I did want to offer, just for clarification, Mr. Smith was commenting on the 100 Resilient Cities effort by the Rockefeller Institute. We did not participate in that program. They essentially funded 100 different cities with a resiliency officer. We did apply, but we did not receive one. So that was a national initiative put on by the Rockefeller Foundation to talk about resiliency in communities and actually fund positions for communities to start moving forward with resiliency initiatives. And same goes for Mr. Travis Smith. If, happy to talk and talk to him about our outreach efforts. As some council may recall, we engaged with more than 3,000 people in our community to develop the Carbon Neutrality Plan. But when you're talking about carbon neutrality by 2030, it's very prescriptive. We know we need to reduce vehicle miles traveled. We know we need to reduce energy consumption in the built environment. And we know we need to reduce consumption of waste and materials. So there is a lot of commonalities. And I hope that a lot of what Mr. Smith has seen has been borrowed from Flagstaff. We know that a lot of communities throughout the U.S. have used not only our Climate Action and Adaptation Plan as a foundation framework, also our Carbon Neutrality Plan. And in fact, I was on the phone today with the city of Columbus, Ohio, because they want to know about our work with the big shift. And so they're going to be borrowing a lot of our efforts. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any additional questions or comments?
Great. Thank you very much. All right, now we will move into item number eight, Spruce Wash and Schultz Creek Watershed Update.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Scott Overton serves as your Public Works Director, here for the first time in a couple months for a post-wildfire flooding update for the newer members of our council. This will be your first real post-wildfire flooding update. Over the summer months and in the late fall, we presented this monthly, and many of you remember that cycle we kind of got into of giving you continual updates. We took the holidays off. I can assure you the work has not stopped. And this evening, we're back in kind of a routine to now start presenting on post-wildfire flooding. But I will tell you, the tone and probably the evening's presentation is going to look a little different than what you saw in the summer months, which was geared more towards response and more towards some of the short-term mitigations. And clearly, now that we are outside of flooding season, you are going to see a focus this evening much more on some of our history, very, very briefly, for some of our newer members and for those of you that might just want a quick refresher. But we're going to focus a lot on the Spruce Wash Watershed update, where we're at since November with the bond passage, and kind of fill you in on what we've been working on since that approval by the voters. And then towards the last portion of the presentation, we'll get into Schultz Creek on the Pipeline West, portions of a post-wildfire burn scar, and then we'll, of course, give you plenty of time for discussion and questions. With me this evening, I have a number of experts that have been working with us throughout these years. And each of them will have a play within the presentation. And again, we really do welcome your conversation, your dialogue, and your questions, as this information is for you and for the public and really should capture not only the brief history, but where we're at on a lot of these bigger projects and initiatives, as we really have tried to work our way towards a more resilient community post-wildfire, burning a more sustainable in response. Very quickly, there's two post-wildfire burn scars that we're dealing with primarily right now in the city. We have the 2019 Museum burn scar that's burned in Dry Lake Hills. We also have the 2022 Pipeline Fire Scar in Schultz Pass. We call that oftentimes Pipeline West. As you know, there is a big impact to the east side of the community as well, which we often refer to as Pipeline East. That is all county jurisdiction. So the two that affect the city limits are the Museum Scar and the Schultz Scar. We had flooding on both burn scars. In '21, we had significant flooding from the Museum Fire Burn Scar in the Schultz Creek Watershed. Of course, that's through our Grandview area, Paradise, and Schultz, or Sunnyside neighborhood. And then this last season in '22, we didn't see the dramatic impact that we saw in Museum of '21, but we saw a shifted focus of response efforts to Pipeline West in the Schultz Creek Watershed with repeated events this last summer. Both were active. Both were ready for response, but we saw more need in the Schultz Creek side, Pipeline West, summer of 2022. I think I made a comment here in the slide deck that's pretty important. Post-wildfire flooding mitigation development is ongoing, and some of the best nation, work in the nation is occurring as quickly as possible. I believe that. I will tell you, we hear from communities that are dealing with similar issues, and we are fortunate in Flagstaff to have some of the West's leading experts on how we deal with post-wildfire flooding. And you're going to hear from those engineers and experts this evening and assure you that quickly and expedient is probably some of the more common verbs we use. You saw this in your packet, a little hard to read on the screen. The red area is the Pipeline Fire Scar. The Museum is that orange color, and you'll see that kind of burnt ember color, green, the tunnel fire. Watersheds are very different. They are designated with the dashed lines, but generally, they flow into one watershed. And that's the takeaway from this slide, kind of a 3D rendering and a very nice illustration of what we're dealing with. Significantly, this next one is Spruce Wash. You'll see in the 2019 Museum Fire Scar, the one single blue dashed line that runs just west of Mount Eldon into the Spruce Wash labeled line, right down through the heart of Sunnyside. So that's the watershed that we're most focused on for the first half tonight. And then that second will be the Pipeline West, which drains into a couple watersheds, but primarily Schultz Creek Watershed for impacts to the city. So Spruce Wash. We're going to kick this off, and I'm going to turn it over to Julie Lead with Peak Engineering, who is going to present the first couple slides on feasibility study, Phase Two.
Good afternoon, Mayor Daggett, members of council. Good to see you again. All right, so just a little background. Feasibility Study Phase One, this was started last year when we looked at a concrete box culvert all the way from Linda Vista to Route 66, through the neighborhood of, through the neighborhoods of Grandview and Sunnyside, upper and lower Sunnyside, all the way out to Sportsman's Warehouse area, 66. That is a project that is financially out of reach. At the time feasibility Phase One was underway, the city partnered with Flagstaff Unified School District to build the Killip Regional Detention Basins. So Killip Regional Detention Basin is about the middle of that corridor, that Spruce Wash corridor. So the next step, feasibility Phase Two, which we also call the Spruce Wash Watershed Management Plan, that is capturing the potential of the Killip Regional Detention Basins and working our way upstream. And that aligns with the bond dollars, thank you to Flagstaff voters, that passed in November. So this is fantastic and exciting work that we are thrilled to be moving forward with. So feasibility Phase Two is three parts. The first part is looking at the hydrology and the amount of recovery that has happened in the burned area, in the watershed. So there has been some vegetation, some regrowth in that area. The canopy is not there. I've got J.E. Fuller, hydrology, geomorphology, Joe is here tonight. He's going to talk about that with you and kind of show you some of that recovery that we have seen and what that means for flows inside the urban corridor on Spruce Wash. The watershed has not recovered. We've seen improvement. It has not recovered. The flood risk still remains. So that's one part of feasibility Phase Two. What are the current conditions? What does it mean? The second is moving that suite of projects forward. I'll show you that suite of projects, and that's to mitigate the flooding specifically in Grandview and Sunnyside. And then the third part of feasibility Phase Two is what does that mean? When all of those projects are completed, constructed, how does that impact flooding? What are the benefits that we see through the neighborhood? So here is your suite of projects. Where the number one is, that is, just for orientation, that is the Cedar Safeway. And then you can see Route 66 in the bottom right corner. You have Cedar Avenue right where that number five is. We've got Sunnyside to the south of five. And then Grandview is the roadway in between the numbers one and four. So the first project in the suite of projects is reconstruction of Grandview Drive. Right now, Grandview Drive is a crowned street, has roll curb, and there's just not a lot of capacity within the roadway prism for stormwater conveyance. So what happens is Spruce Wash hits Linda Vista, and then it overtops at Linda Vista, and then it runs down Grandview. And that's where we saw some pretty significant impacts in 2021. So what we are proposing, which is a waiver to the engineering standards, is an inverted crown roadway. So what we're trying to do is pull where that water So what we're trying to do is pull where that water would typically flow in the front yards for folks or through the yards and pull more of that water into the roadway prism. So essentially, we're going to take the road and invert the crown so we can have more capacity in the roadway prism. One added benefit to the residents on Grandview is we need to lower the city's infrastructure, the water and sewer. So that requires putting in new water and sewer infrastructure on Grandview at the same time we're doing the pavement. So that's going to be a good benefit. The facilities are aging, and that is included in the project scope as a necessary item. The second item is upsizing the Linda Vista Crossing. So right now, there are a couple of pipes there. We need to put in a larger box culvert, which will help pass more flow, obviously, and lessen the amount that overtops. The third project, oh, I skipped, I'm sorry. I do know my one, two, threes. That was the third one. Okay, the second one is the Wedge, the Wedge Detention Basin. That's number two. And that's the forested area immediately west of the Cedar Safeway, kind of where that slip lane goes where you can catch cedar to go up the hill. And it would be creation of a detention basin at that location. And then three, I already talked about, four, Cedar Avenue to Linda Vista Drive channel. Right now, that's an earthen channel. We need to expand its capacity. Likely, a portion or perhaps all of it would be a hardened channel. What I mean by hardened channel is concrete or shotcrete, a material that stands up to that scour that can happen in the channel. The fifth is the Cedar Avenue Crossing. There's a box culvert there. It needs to be a lot bigger. From Cedar to Dortha, this is the project that was completed last year in the Dortha Project. So channel improvements have been made between Cedar and Dortha, and that's about just above where the number six is there, the channel hardening that was done last year, and then the Dortha Crossing. So Project Six is continuing that hardened channel from Dortha to Arroyo Seco, the townhomes. And then the seventh project in the suite is the Arroyo Seco inlet. Right now, we have a temporary situation with large concrete blocks and some temporary fencing. It's working, but we need to put in something permanent. We also need to design it in a way that we move some of that water through Ponderosa Park and into the Killip Regional Detention Basins. So that Project Seven encompasses that conveyance into the Killip Regional Detention Basins. And I want to know, you know, I have the list of recommended projects here at the bottom. Not recommended at the time is the Wedge Detention Basin. And I want to say, it's not recommended at this time in its current configuration, which is a considerable excavation at a considerable cost for about a 10% benefit to the overall system. We may still need to have something at the wedge. It just may not look as we have envisioned it so far. Maybe there's a way to dial that back. We need to see the benefit of some detention upstream so we don't cause conditions downstream that are unacceptable. Right. So we have put together a very rough timeline. Mr. Clifton asked us, gave us the challenge of, how would you complete this in three years? Which is incredibly ambitious. And we've been working as a team. We had a summit in October, the end of October, to say, how could we pull this all together? And what would this sequencing look like? And the purple bars are intended to represent design phase. Pink is property acquisition, and the orange is construction. We also have the estimated dollar amounts. Those are construction costs. Those are not total project costs because there are design and project management that is also part of the project. But those are rough opinions of probable construction costs for each one of those. And we've, what we had to do through our summit and our workshop with a large group of city staff and the whole consulting team is figure out, okay, what other projects are coming online? Like, we know that the Fourth Street and Lockit Roundabout is planned for construction in a certain year. Well, we need to think about sequencing of, well, if we have to shut that down, we can't also be constructing Linda Vista at the same time, for example. So that's part of how we've laid out this rough timeline. The city has advertised for a construction manager at risk, bringing that C Mar contractor onboard. I think Scott's going to mention that in a moment, or Mac is. And we will be working with that C Mar contractor to refine this schedule. You see a very long bar at the bottom for the Grandview improvements. We're looking at utility replacement in one season and then roadway construction in another season. The wedge is grayed out. That can be a floater. It could happen. We'll see what that looks like as more information, more of the analysis is complete and what piece of that may need to happen and when. All right. So with that, Joe.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I'm Joe Lovrich with J. E. Fuller. And like Julie said, a big piece of planning these improvements is understanding what the current conditions of the water. A lot of the emergency response and everything up to this point has been based on the immediate post-fire modeling that was done. And what we needed to do is just to refresh on the modeling to understand what the current conditions of the hydrology is, update it with the projects that have been built in the field. So what we did is we stepped through a multi-step process to understand, okay, what is, what do we feel the most reasonable current risk is to the watershed? So what we did was step back to our initial models, re-critiqued them, you know, looking at the flood events that happened. What changes do we think should be made to those based on what we saw? What are the problems? What are the, how did it work well? To make some changes. Then we spent some time in the field in November looking at many points across the fire. So we wanted to look at areas that burned severely, moderately, low severity, unburnt in multiple areas across the fire with different landscapes, different vegetypes, to really get an understanding of what do we really feel the hydrology is saying at this point in time. So when you look up on the mountain, you can see a lot of grass. You can see there are some aspen regrowth on some of the slopes when you get up more towards the Eldon side. There is recovery happening, but what is the scale of that recovery is the question. So with all of our field data, we came up with an initial pass that, hey, based on this, this is what we feel the hydrology is saying, so we adjusted our model. Along with that, we wanted the hydraulic updates, so geometry changes that have happened in the watershed. There's the alluvial fans that have been constructed on the main tributaries, the main Spruce Avenue Wash and the West Tributary, across the Bayless property up by Mount Eldon Estates, and then behind Buffalo Park, the Paradise Fan that's in there. So those influence how the water flows through those areas. And then finally, we wanted to calibrate this. So we have, if we look at, we look at the data that we have, and we say, okay, what can this data tell us? Well, we know that in 2021, there was a lot of big flood events. Those flood events corresponded to big rainfall events in the watershed. Come 2022, did I say that right? That was 2021, 2022, we still had a number of rainfall events, but those rainfall events were smaller than 2021. So inherently, the flows that are coming off the watershed are going to be smaller. So just by looking at the flood events that came down through the city and say, hey, we didn't get much water this monsoon, the flood risk is gone, is an incorrect statement. So what we have is a lot of calibration data for small storms. So we can look at those. We don't have that calibration data for large storms for this year. But what we have is a feel for what we think, what we think the watershed is, how it could respond. So this is just at three different points. The graphs, what they do, what they show are for a one minute, or a one inch and 45-minute event. This is kind of our design rainfall, one inch and 45 minutes or two inches and 45 minutes. You can see that at each of these places, pre-fire, there was really no runoff with a one-inch event. Immediate post-fire, you know, a big uptick in the discharges. And at this point in time, we feel like those one-inch discharges could see a significant decrease from what we initially modeled. And that really plays in line with what we saw come through the city during those flood events and what we saw in all the monitoring cameras that are up in the watershed. The two-inch and 45-minute, we didn't see these storms this last year. We saw these storms on the Pipeline West and the Pipeline East, but not on Museum. And so, so we, again, we stepped from pre-fire, very low flows, immediate post-fire, really high. And we feel like those, that flood risk maybe has come down between 20 and 30%, depending on where you're looking at it. So it's still there. It is recovering, but there is still a risk. And so that's the baseline we're using right now for the improvements that are being proposed. And this is something that is continual progress as the watershed recovers.
Thank you, Joe. So here's the good news, is these years of efforts and these years of understanding translated to us developing a proposal to the voters. And at the time, the council forwarded the question on in November, and it was approved by 76% of the voters. So we had a high approval rating of this proposition for 4.1, which provided $26 million of resource. I would like to point out, remember feasibility one was about 95 to 100 million minus property acquisitions, not included, excuse me. So 26 million is about a quarter of the original fix, but we knew we could make meaningful progress with this amount of funding. And so the focused effort has been kicked off. And it kicked off actually a few days before the election. We started to plan, kind of a what-if summit. Okay, if we're receiving some funding, how do we start thinking about this the day after the election? And really, that's what happened. With that success, we knew that we wanted this construction to follow our feasibility phase two process. This data is super important. It's going to verify and make sure that we're doing the best with the resource we have for the greatest benefit to our residents and to make sure we're at least being as realistic as possible with likely storm events. That engineering design kicked off very, very quickly. Of course, the intent is to mitigate these issues. And as Joe explained, we have seen some recovery. However, the risk is still fairly great for this watershed. Here were the things we knew we needed to do. We had to have a commitment. We had to have a commitment from Water Services and Stormwater, Public Works and the Response Effort, Capital Improvements, our engineering teams, all of our internal service groups within the city. So start thinking of all the people that we utilize to help us deliver things, our procurement people, our legal folks, our real estate professionals. Every single group within the city that might have an impacted need within this was tasked with understanding what it meant for a positive voter box. So internal service groups, they all came to the table. We knew our community engineering resources were already working hard and diligently. We were going to need more of their resources, so they were all notified quickly. And then, of course, probably the most important last one is our residents. We all tried to put ourselves in their shoes and understand at our summit that they are impacted the most, and our efforts make a difference. Our contributions to this community are significant, and our focus was to be on the long-term mitigation improvement to make meaningful impact. This entire team put this in thought. We created the Technical Advisory Committee shortly after the bond passage. I included the intent statement because I think it's a really important intent statement. The intent of our TAC, which now meets weekly since the bond, of the same group and professionals I spoke of a moment ago, there's about 35 of them in this technical group. We discuss and coordinate the work effort between the city divisions and consultants for the 22-funded Spruce Wash project delivery and engineering. That's it. But it is a coordinated effort, and it is focused. And this TAC is really a good production in what we get done. Once they started to meet, they started to develop the path forward. They had the results of phase two. They had the modeling. We started to now translate the $26 million into reality. We took that timeline and compressed it into what Julie showed, those simple bars of design and delivery. And then we involved some more folks. I'm going to let Mac speak to what he is now working through with the funding and the engineering support.
Thanks, Scott. Good evening, Mac McNamara. I am a project manager with the Capital Improvements Section at the city. I'm briefly going to walk through our project delivery plan. Our delivery method is going to be a construction manager at risk. It's also known as a C Mar. A request for statement of qualifications was advertised on December 15th of 2022 for a C Mar. That advertisement closed January 13th, and we received five statements of qualifications from contractors. We are currently reviewing those five statements of qualifications, and we're scheduling interviews for early February if need be to make a C Mar selection. C Mar contract negotiations and project scheduling will take place in February with our selected C Mar. We will then be back to council in March to award the C Mar contract. A notice to proceed and guarantee maximum price, number one, will be brought to council by end of May. And then lastly, the intent is to start construction in the fall of 2023 after monsoons. Construction will continue through 2024 and 2025 to complete all the projects. Next slide. Currently, survey and design is underway. And as Julie went through, these below here are suite of projects. We'll be back next month to go through these in further detail. And I'll turn it back over to Scott.
Thanks, Mac. And you know, Mac covered it very, very quickly. I can't express enough gratitude towards every city employee that has pitched in on this effort. We condensed the C Mar construction manager at risk process, our delivery tool, by months to try to meet our deadlines. And everyone's checking their boxes and doing as quickly as possible good, efficient work so we can get the greatest benefit out of that 26 million. And we were excited to have five respondents. They're in review. And we're really going to look forward to bringing you those proposals and that award in the next couple of months. So it's a great project. I think the excitement is high, and everybody's excited to be working on it. We're thankful to the community. We're thankful to your continued support. That really sums up all of Spruce Wash. We covered a lot of material. We got you caught up, and we didn't cover response. We didn't cover short-term mitigations. Tonight's focus was, what are we doing to focus on the long-term mitigations? And I think that was the focus of the presentation. We can either stop here and take questions that you might have on Schultz Creek, excuse me, Spruce Wash, or we can get through Schultz Creek and just take them all in combination. It'd be your pleasure.
Let's go ahead and take the next presentation and then have all of the questions at once.
Sounds good. So I'm going to turn it over to Ed from our Stormwater Group to talk Schultz Creek with you.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So I'll be going over, just like Scott and the rest of the team did, we'll kind of do a crash course on Schultz Creeks, the Pipeline West. So working through this here, we'll talk about the mitigations that we're doing for the flood threat in Stevano Way, Coconino Estates, downtown, and South Side as a result of that fire. So moving from the upstream to the downstream, we'll talk a little bit briefly about the detention basins at Eldon Lookout Road. Those are complete and functioning. And then the channel between those basins and Highway 180, there's two projects in that section. One is a county-driven one for the replacement of the culvert at Eldon Lookout Road. They are working through design right now. And the other one is the city one, which I'll talk about briefly. And then the Highway 180 crossings, so the culvert at Highway 180, which is in design and survey as we speak, and the Highway 180 to Rio de Flag, which is the same project, just a different component. And then briefly talk about, again, we're not talking about too much mitigation here, but we'll briefly mention what's going on in Francis Short Pond. So again, those detention basins were completed this summer, this fall. Great work. Less than four months after the fire, we had these complete. 2.4 million out of NRCS Emergency Watershed Protection, as well as a 25% match out of the State Department of Forest and Fire Management. So a huge win to the community. So a huge win to the community. Despite that, we still do have considerable flood threat. This helps mitigate that flood threat coming off Schultz Creek, but does not completely mitigate it for the communities downstream. As I mentioned, we have the county project, Eldon Lookout Road, and then immediately downstream of that, we have a need for channel stabilization. So this is probably a little hard to see, but you can, this picture here is taken after a few of the flood events. This channel is starting to unravel with those large flood events that have come through. And even with those detention basins, we are going to have heightened flow coming out of the basins. So maintaining these channels so that do not scour and produce sediment debris into the neighborhoods and into the downtown area is rather important. So this will be funded out of, again, that Emergency Watershed Protection set of funds, EWP out of the NRCS, Natural Resource Conservation Service, Department of Agriculture. So that, that fund, the EWP fund, has been refunded by the omnibus bill at the federal level in December. So we are still waiting for the details on that, but there should be funding in the next year or two for this project, which will be putting a series of channel stabilization bars through the channel from Eldon Lookout Road to Highway one-eighty on private lands. Schultz Creek, Highway one-eighty, we are moving forward with design survey. Our surveyor and designer is Shepard Wessnister, SWI. They are working through design on what we were calling Option Two last year, which is slightly up from where the current culvert is. It goes under the Mount Cavalier Lutheran Church parking lot in Soccer Field and then connects to the Rio de Flag. So if you're looking at this image here, the current culvert is right here and goes under a part of Highway one-eighty where it has three different size changes, constricting down each one of those before going under Stavon Way and hitting the Rio de Flag. This concept, concept shows that we'll be recreating the channel with a straight shot with dual-box culverts, concrete culverts underneath Highway one-eighty and then underneath the parking lot, Soccer Field, before outletting with energy dissipation and the Rio de Flag. So when this is completed, it should provide substantial improvements for the downstream communities. So we are working through design survey. We also have real estate and legal working on the property rights and acquisition side, and then funding is, is being worked at from several different angles as we speak. And then just very briefly, again, not really want to get too much into mitigation here, short-term mitigation, but we have drained Francis Short Pond as best as we could. It seems to keep on raining and snowing on it, so it actually does hold a lot of water right now, even though the drain is fully open. And the purpose for this is we lost over twenty percent of the capacity of the pond this year due to ash and fine sediment that entered the pond. The pond did do what it was originally designed to do in nineteen-twenty-three. It did provide a really great flood mitigation for downtown and south side. So we actually had operators out there before every event lowering the pond elevation so that the pond could refill with the floodwaters that were coming down off of Schultz Creek into the Rio de Flag. And due to that, we, we had very minimal overtopping of the banks in the south side community. But because it is in line, it did trap all the ash and sediment that was coming down out of Schultz Creek that made it that far. So our hope is to dredge this, to get back to its original capacity, likely going to be slightly delayed just with the amount of snowpack we have up, up on the peaks, but we are hoping to get this done before monsoon season. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Sarah to talk about communications. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sarah Langley, Public Affairs Director. So I'll wrap up our presentation tonight with a quick overview about, or on the communications and public outreach that we continue to do on post-wildfire flooding in our community. So Public Affairs has been and continues to work with Beta PR, which is a local PR firm. They're based here in Flagstaff, and luckily, they know a lot about the neighborhoods that we are working with for post-wildfire flooding. We have a list of different tools that we use to communicate with both of the impacted communities. A lot of these we've been using previously, but we do have a few new ones that we're trying out as well. I hope the new council members have all seen our e-newsletters that should be going to your email addresses. There's an example of one there from Museum Fire up on the screen, and we send those out periodically when there are things that the community should know, updates we have on different projects, or new funding, anything like that. For those who, residents who are not online or maybe don't have access to the internet, we have a series of physical information boards placed in both of the impacted areas so that residents can stop by and read about the latest updates. One of the newer tools we're trying is onsite banners or sandwich boards. So these are big three-by-five-foot banners that we place at different project sites so that if you're walking by, I always wonder, you know, what, what are they doing there? That way you can see what's going on. So there on screen is an example of a banner that we've put at the Francis Short Pond to let people know what the city is up to. We also have websites for both of the impacted areas. We update those frequently to make sure they stay up to date. And then we use physical mailed flyers and door-to-door flyers for important updates, things that we need to make sure everybody sees. We go ahead and mail those out. We, of course, are in direct communication with a lot of residents through email to answer their specific questions. And then lastly, we use community meetings periodically. And that brings me to my next slide. We will be holding a community meeting specifically for the Spruce Wash Museum flood area. So those are those Paradise, Grandview, and Sunnyside neighborhoods. Those residents are all invited to chambers next Thursday, so it's February second at six PM. We'll have an informative presentation that will focus on the Prop four-four-one projects. And then it just provides a great opportunity to let residents come and ask questions and have, you know, really detailed conversations with staff and with our engineers as well. So I think I have two more slides. I always leave these in every presentation, more for any residents who may be watching. If you are a resident in the Museum flood area or the Spruce Wash, you can visit museumfloodprojects.com for more information. We also have our email address and phone number there on the slide. And then for those on the west side of Flagstaff and the Pipeline West area, the website is And again, we have that email address and phone number. So with that, Mayor and Council, I'll turn it back to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take public comment. I think we probably have a lot of questions and comments among us. So if Ms. Kessler, would you come up for public comment?
Hello again, and thank you so much for letting me go over time with my comments at the last question. I just have, well, I am impacted. I live on Mead Lane in Coconino Estates, and thank you so much, everybody, for working so hard. I actually used to live in, I had a house in twenty, for twenty years out in Timberline on Saddle Avenue, and that's one of the reasons why I moved into town was because of the Schultz fire. Had sandbags around the house and, and my, and anyway, I'm very familiar with the whole, thank you, the whole fire situation since two thousand and ten. I thought Coconino Estates was a nice, safe place from floods and fires, and then boom, it happened. So have sandbags around my house again. We moved them around for the winter, but I still have them. My question is, I'm so happy to see that you're, you've got that channel going, you're working on that channel from Schultz Creek by ACE, Arizona Conservation. My friend works there, by the way. I heard all about what happened there. And, and the Rio is so close to, to the road there where it backs up, and I'm really happy to have that channel going through. When will that be completed? Because I think that's one of the big problems we have on Mead Lane is the water not getting to the Rio, which is just three houses away from where I live. And when will that be completed? And until then, is there any temporary mitigation that can be done to prevent water from not coming into our neighborhood and getting to the Rio, even though the project has not been completed yet there? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please, Ed. And if I could tack on a question to the one-eighty culvert question, how much more money do we need in order to do that project?
All right. So it sounds like three questions there possibly. One is the timing. So the timing for the new culvert, if I'm understanding that correctly, the timing on the new culvert at Highway one-eighty, that's still a little bit up in the air. Obviously, we're moving as fast as we can, but we have to get through design, survey, property acquisition. And then there's also quite a bit of coordination between ADOT, who has Highway one-eighty, who are on board. We talk with them quite a bit in these meetings that Scott was mentioning, these weekly meetings, as well as our monthly meetings and the meetings we have with the flood control districts. We have multiple tiers of technical advisory committees, which, which most of us are on. We do meet with ADOT, with their, their engineer here in town, so we'll be working with them, obviously. And then there also is a county intersection there as well, so we'll be working with the county on that as well. But to give you a solid time, I unfortunately do not have a time yet for a Highway one-eighty one that will be completed. The other question was shorter-term mitigation. So the shorter term, how can we get the water that does get over Highway one-eighty at that constriction? How do we get that back into the Rio as fast as we can? There's not a whole lot that's really great in terms of ways to make that happen. We do have sort of a bathroom, bathtub effect in Stavon Way, as well as the northern side of Coconino Estates. So it kind of holds the water. Once it goes over at one-eighty, it kind of holds the water. It's really hard to get it back into the Rio. There was a, a temporary, non-engineered ditch that was constructed in Stavon Way that helps move some of that water into the Rio. We do have a design, and that's on a private property. We do have a design for making that a little bit more robust, and we're still in conversation with that private property owner of how that might look or what that might, what might needs to be done to provide that, that short-term mitigation. That will help it drain faster, but there will still be impacts, obviously, in the neighborhood. And then the third question was amount of funding. So unfortunately, it is a rather expensive endeavor since it is fairly large box culvert, a series of box culverts underground, a slightly new channel, and then obviously the energy dissipation within the Rio de Flag as well. So when we first cost that out, it was about five million dollars total. We do expect ADOT to help fund their portions, so within their right-of-way. We don't know, have the exact numbers on that, but roughly one million if we had to put an estimate to it. So we're still short about four-point-four million on the total project. And of course, this is an estimated cost that may be much lower. I don't think it'll be much higher. I think we're trying to be conservative on that opinion and probable cost, but that is the range that we have for that.
Do we have a lead on funding sources?
I think there's, there's a few different things at play here. And I know, and I don't know where we are at with it, but there are some House bills to, to attempt to pay for, you know, externally, whether that's at state or federal level. We did reach out to Federal Highway Administration last fall to see if we would be qualified for emergency funding. Unfortunately, they did not see that deemed, or deemed, is not eligible under the Federal Highways emergency funding due to the fact that the highway itself was not damaged, even though it was closed, obviously, five times due to overtopping. So we, we can't tap that amount. We have also tried with EWP, mentioned earlier in this presentation. Unfortunately, road crossings do not qualify under EWP. We've also reached out to FEMA, DEMA, so DEMA being the state version of the emergency management agency. So we are working multiple different avenues to see if there's ways to fund it. And then obviously, I'll be back here next week talking about stormwater rates, and that will be another way to fund it within the community as well.
Thank you. All right, Council. Yes, I believe nothing online.
Question.
Oh, Stacy, did you say something?
I did not, Mayor. No, we don't have anybody online for comment.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much. This question is for Julie or Scott, I believe. Julie can probably take it. It's about the wedge detention basin. You mentioned in your description, it's that forested area over by the Cedar Safeway, right? I'm really fuzzy on what that would look like if that project were to be completed, and my concern, you know, the red flags that fly up in my head is that we're going to lose all those trees in there, and that's going to, that area, it'll probably regrow eventually. But can you talk more about that? I would, I would hate to see that wedge become a bald patch. I, I just, if there's a way to avoid that, I would like to consider that as much as possible. And given that this project is iffy to begin with, you guys might be of the same mind there.
Thank you for the question, Vice Mayor. Yes, I think we, we share the same concern, what it would look like, it would be, in the, so when we approached the concept design, we, we said, well, how much could we possibly fit at this location? What would be the maximum amount of volume of stormwater that we could put there? And if we excavate down, so this would be complete removal of all of the trees in that wedge and excavate down as far as we can go, we could fit about two Killip Regional Detention Basins at that location, so about fifteen acre feet at that location. That may not be what we need. And we recognized, I mean, it comes with a large cost, too, to get it there, to get the infrastructure and the piping from Linda Vista to the wedge is very expensive, and then it's the impact as well to, to that basin. So I kind of envision it, and the concept is something similar to the detention basin at the I-40 TI by Mountain, Mountain Line. You know how that, have that large basin out there off of Caspar? That kind of give you a sense of what that could look like, where you have vegetation but no trees. So we, we are dialing it back as much as we can. The tricky part is that when we send more water to Killip and we send more water to the channel, we have to be careful that we aren't sending more water to the folks that live south of Six in a way that's unacceptable, that all of a sudden, folks that live south of Six who haven't experienced flooding prior would suddenly experience flooding because all of a sudden we're, we're pointing it in that direction. So what we're doing is we're walking that back a little bit and saying, okay, well, to avoid that, how much do we need to have at the wedge? And this, this has been the, the hot conversation for the past two weeks, is dialing that back. So perhaps, maybe it's half, half of that, that footprint. But we are very sensitive to the tree removal and what that would look like for the community.
Okay, thank you. I don't need to go into it deeper now, but make a little note there that I'm not happy about that, the aesthetic of that process, although I will always be supportive of what needs to be done for the science and the engineering to keep our neighborhood safe. So bear that in mind as well.
Absolutely noted. Thank you.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. There was an affordable housing project that was planned just west of Bashes in a little kind of triangle of Safe, is it Safeway? I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah, Safeway. I should know that. I've been in it. Is that on hold, or is that still going to happen?
I, I can't speak to the housing development, but that partial is not in play for any stormwater work.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Yeah.
City manager?
Pardon me, not in play for any housing at this time.
Julie, and, and this is, this is more in terms of our future planning. You, you mentioned that because Grandview has the indent and, no.
Inverted crown?
Inverted crown and rolled curbs. It was difficult to, to really move that water. So... So would you say that engineering-wise, straight curbs in terms of stormwater movement tend to be better than rolled curbs?
I, I think, Mayor Daggett, it comes down to really capacity. So right now, Grandview has a crowned street, so it's like this, and then it has a rolled curb. In general, rolled curb doesn't have that much capacity, but when we go to a standard vertical curb, we increase that capacity by a couple of inches, and it's a surprising amount when you do the calculations on even just a couple of inches extra of curb can add quite a bit of capacity into a roadway system. So folks from the public might be wondering, what does that mean for us? It means new driveway abrins that will slope up to match in to, to folks' driveways, to be able to work that, that vertical curb in instead of rolled curb.
Thank you. And please stay there, because the next one's for you, too. Ponderosa Park is the, the final hope to be able to have water conveyance through there temporary where residents could have use of the park back again?
Mayor Daggett, yes. The intent is to have a mitigation, a conveyance through Ponderosa Park where the park is still usable. We recognize the importance of that amenity to the community, and so we've, we've had thoughts about, well, could we make it a multi-use, multi-functional channel, or does it need to go underground? That's actually a design that SWI is working on. I think Stephen and Kayla are here, so if you do have specific questions about that design, that piece through Ponderosa Park is a grant-funded project that's outside of the bond work, but we need to connect our design into that, that grant-funded piece.
Thank you. And this next question, I think, could be for either you or Jay, but it was, it struck me when Jay was talking about the rainfall that we had last year, and I'm talking on the museum, the, the Spruce Wash, and mitigation that we've already done, like with the Dortha Project. When you said that we, we didn't have the flooding, were you saying that, that our recent mitigation hasn't been tested yet? Or would you say that mitigation that we've done partially was responsible for not having the flood events in that neighborhood?
Mayor Daggett, I think it's a, it's a mix. There's, when some of those flood events came through, some of the, the Rio fans were built up on the forest. I think that helped for those events to drop out the sediment, so the water was cleaner coming down in. And then by that time, the channel was there for the, you know, Cedar to Dortha and into that pipe. That helped. So, so they kind of all played in, played together, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your indulgence, everyone. Scott, the Technical Advisory Committee, does the county, what's the county's involvement in that? Do they sit in on the meetings, or, or you're still meeting regularly with the county?
Yeah, so that's another really important piece, our relationship with the Flood Control District and the county efforts. For our local Technical Advisory Committee, the Monday meetings I'm referring to, the focus of that group is only the city-sponsored, city portion, bond-funded projects. But to Joe's point, they're all related. We're looking at the greater system. So a number of these consultants and engineers also sit on the county teams, doing the exact same work on Forest and the exact same work in the other burn scars. I, I would say that the, the communication is strong between those two, but direct involvement in the TAC, we keep them apprised, but we do not have county involvement as we're dealing with city infrastructure.
Makes sense. Stay there.
Okay.
Please.
Yeah.
This wasn't mentioned, so I don't know if it's going to be part of a future presentation, but the Park, the Park Street project, is that still in play?
Parkway Basin.
Parkway Basin. There we go.
It is. We currently have been working with, now, that one is a unique project. That is a county-funded project, using some funding that was received last year, and we are working through design iterations and what is the greatest benefit to the entire system. We do hope to bring you kind of a further update on that soon, but that one definitely has nuances and calculation benefits, and again, the entire system. But that is something that we continue to work diligently on, and it was also a topic of conversation the last couple of weeks.
Thank you. And my final question, I believe, Ms. Kessler asked about, is there any temporary fix, near-term fix, in terms of Mead and Stavona? When, will we be having a presentation on personal mitigation options? Like, how are residents in that area going to be informed about what steps that they can take? And I'm guessing it's going to be similar to last summer, but what steps that they can take to mitigate while we are working on the other projects?
Yeah, I would anticipate a fairly thorough presentation closer to spring, you know, before summer months, clearly, but our focus tonight has been more on longer-term mitigations. I think you would see very similar presentations than what you've seen the last two years, dealing with short-term mitigations. The best advice we can provide our residents, the best support we can provide them. I, I will caveat this and warn everyone that, you know, what we've seen in the past was financially feasible because we weren't transitioning to longer-term mitigations. Really, the funding focus has shifted to get to long-term mitigations as quickly as possible, but that has also put a lot of limits and much more restrictive practices on Flood Control District dollars and on city local dollars. We know that our money is better spent on long-term mitigations and not response. So if there are sandbags on site, we're going to talk about reuse, we're going to talk about how they can utilize the product they have already. And then our hope is the projects that we're delivering have meaningful impact, and we can start to communicate what that will look like, and those mitigations might change. But again, until these are all in place and working as a system, we're probably not completely out of that risk hazard. I think that was pretty fair to say, generally, or we'll be in the spring.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And that was my last one, so thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Did anyone else work up any questions or comments? All right. So thank you very much for the presentations. So item number nine, we have another call for public participation, and as a reminder, this is to allow the public to address the council about items that are not on tonight's agenda. So do we have any public participation? Mayor, we do not. Thank you very much. And informational items, too, from Mayor, Council, and City Manager, as well as future item, agenda item requests. Let's start with Councilmember Harris.
Go back and find it.
Vice Mayor Aslan?
Oh, I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews?
I don't have anything. Thank you so much, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy?
It's my grandfather's birthday today.
Happy birthday, grandpa.
He's not with us anymore, but...
Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. Mayor and I will be heading down to the State Capitol tomorrow to testify in front of the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, along with our state lobbyist Todd Medeska. We will be asking the legislature for more funding in regards to our flood mitigation and stormwater needs. Should be a good trip.
Councilmember House?
I don't believe I have anything this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
I can't find my note.
I just want to give another shout-out and reminder about the Open Doors Art in Action panel discussion this Friday at the Epiphany Church. I believe that starts at either 6:00 or 7:00, but it's definitely, it's a series of discussions that you don't want to miss. City manager, Mr. Clifton, do you have anything for us?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. All right. If, if there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.